Good evening. I'd like to call the Marlboro School Committee meeting to order at 7:30. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First presentation, MHS Student Advisory. Hello, ladies.
Hold on, just gotta pull up my notes.
Is the green light on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does this work?
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to start off by asking a few questions. How many of you have been to an MHS football game?
Ever? Or this year?
This year. This year. Okay, well, I'm not gonna lie, that disappoints me, but I guess my second question doesn't apply now, but I thought it would be more, but, okay. I hope that the next time I'm here, it's almost everyone's hands are raised. So, I'm not talking about football games, I'm talking about marching bands. So, our theme for our show is superheroes, well, summon the heroes, but superheroes. And we play Superman, Avengers, and Incredibles. And we started off the marching season a week before school started at band camp, nine to three every day for five days. We were at school, learning our drills, out on vital, the hot sun beating down on us, sweat dripping, no, I'm just kidding. It was hot, though. Yeah, Mr. Redon yelling at us through a microphone, he had a microphone this year. It was hot, and after a hard and productive week, we were able to learn our whole show, drills and music. And that's a show you would see if you went to football games at the halftime show. The work didn't stop there, though. We had stand music to learn and drills to fix. So, every Thursday after school, the band stays and we go up on vital and we fix drills and we fix music. And that's every Thursday. Sometimes it's really hot, sometimes it's not too bad, but I really like the band dynamic because it's really fun and everyone's so accepting of everyone else. And after every football game, we go to the 99, almost everyone, and it's nice to get to know people outside of school and band. And we also have a really good relationship with the athletic department. Coach Mahoney and Rudds and the other football coaches and the football team are really supportive of us, and they always cheer for us when we play, and they always dance when we play our stand tunes. And all in all, marching band is really fun, and you should all go to the football game and see our halftime show because I have a solo.
Any questions for Allison?
I especially liked the Incredibles portion.
Oh.
That was very good, so thank you.
And you guys did, you did an awesome job in the parade, too.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with you? Here we go. Sorry.
Hi, I'm new. My name's Emma. I'm going to be talking about Triple E. So, all of you guys know Triple E has had an outbreak, Triple E has had an outbreak this year, and it is affecting our sports practices and games because now all of them have to be before seven. And so, many students are actually like really happy about it because it's easier to get there, you can see the games, practices are right after school. And, but also, like, I've heard some students upset about it because they have to, like, go to their work right after school, they have work and everything and other extracurriculars so they can't make it to the games. And, yeah, I guess. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Anybody, any questions? Oh, okay. Welcome. Thank you. Okay, I guess our other friends can't make it tonight. Okay, moving along. Camp Invention. I think we have Mrs. Hall with us tonight. Mrs. Hall is in the hall! Yay!
I'm here. My name is Kelly Hall. I'm the fifth grade engineer and teacher at Whitcomb. This was my second year working at Camp Invention. I was co-director with Julie Baker. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. Camp Invention is an amazing camp. Like I said, it's our second year. Or not. Do what? I got it. Oh, you got it? Okay. So, it focuses on creativity and innovation, entrepreneurship, teamwork and collaboration, curiosity. Next slide. The daily schedule, the kids come in in the morning, they have breakfast provided by the school. There's base camp activities going on, there's stations, and at the stations are the high school interns. This year, we had 14 interns, most of them worked both weeks. There are four modules, they're in yellow, I will explain them in a minute. So, the students' day, they rotate through the four modules. They have lunch provided by the school. Recession, which is Camp Invention games, those are also run by the high school interns. And then, at the end of the day, we kind of all wrap up together and they leave. We love the program for many different reasons. There are daily lesson plans provided, there are videos that are embedded in the lessons, guided questions, reflection questions, there's daily newsletters that go home to families so that parents can see what the kids learned about during the day, and every single thing that we need is provided. We do get recyclables from families, there is a whole, I set up the library and the kids can come in and get recyclables to do their own inventions. Innovation Force, I gotta read through my paper, is one of the modules. This is, this one was one of my favorites. Children team up with Innovation Force, a group of national inventors, Hall of Fame inductees who've been transformed into superheroes to battle the evil plagiarizer, a supervillain who's out to steal the world's ideas. As children create a device to retrieve the stolen ideas, they learn about the importance of collaboration in patents. So, they're learning some of the vocabulary. In this bottom picture, there's two girls, they're using an etching tool, and their superpower was to project on a wall, like, so it's modern inventors, it's not just all like Thomas Edison and, so the kids are being exposed to people who are current. Another event module was, I'm not going to read the whole thing, Deep Sea Mystery. So, they get lost on a stranded island, they got to create boats, they got to design and hoist up sails, they made tools to navigate the stars, so that was another module they did. The third one was Farm Tech, and the students got to earn moolah, so they kind of brought the money, the math into that aspect. They got to talk about running a business. Here, they were, the last day, they got to go outside and they had, like, horse pulls, the kids had to do the work, and they had, they had to get through, like, they were getting sprinkled, so they had a lot of fun, too, while doing it. And the fourth module was DIY Orbot. So, this is where the kids got to work with robots, and I loved how they each day had a small group that would go over and they got to dissect and do reverse engineering and look at the insides. And every day, there was different kinds of things going on using the robots. And teacher feedback, I think it's really neat that all of our teachers came back, so that's, that, that kind of, you know, gives you a lot of information, all four came back. The teachers, I think, almost said it was almost like having PD because you're learning as you're doing, you're kind of putting yourself, you're doing things that you may not be comfortable with, and you don't know how things are going to go, but you just kind of jump in and try it. The next slide, I'm not going to read everything. Here's a picture of all our interns. We had 14 high school interns, and 10 of them had come back from the summer before. And a lot of them, it was two weeks of them volunteering. We even, we did have a student from AMSA join us, his sibling was in the program, so they also joined us. Next slide. Parent feedback, I just, the feedback every day is amazing, and that's kind of nice about base camp, so Julie and I could greet parents on the way in, and the high school interns got the kids settled. But, but it's a camp to teach STEM, creativity, critical thinking, encourage teamwork and problem solving, it's energized my daughter, she's interested in continuing STEAM or STEM coursework in school. And a lot of the people were, you know, they came back from the summer before. So, this is changes from year one to two, so this summer, we added a second week. It's the same curriculum the second week, so you can't sign up for two weeks. We doubled the amount of spots, so we had 80 for each week. We added fifth grade, the first year it was just third and fourth, so a lot of kids are starting a VP. We had about 70, 75 sign up for each week, but when, when they attended, the first week we had 62, the second week we had 64. We did follow up, call home, we had interpreters to call home also. A lot of it was transportation and vacation plans changed. So, you know, we would love to discuss, you know, maybe adding a bus for next summer or, I don't know, other options. And we would also like to maybe get into the schools and to promote the program, you know, kind of play it up a little bit more beforehand. And that's it. Any questions? Yes.
I had a question. Is the curriculum this year different than the curriculum was the last year?
Yes. Yes. So, and I forgot to mention, I did, I wrote, I wrote down a little note, over the summer, we did have a representative from the company come and visit us, she came out two days, and she said that that week, they were already, like, their curriculum for next summer, they were already piloting it, they come up with a brand-new, like, stories.
Cool.
In their, in their real world, that's what I love about them. We also had a day where one of our big donors, Northson, they came out from their company with three representatives to visit it, which was really nice.
Mm-hmm. Right. Any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead, you go first.
This may be more to the superintendent than to you, Kelly. Is there a capacity issue that we'd have if we ramped it up even more?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, currently, we're, the busing capacity with the three buses we may have had, we're already traveling with Title I students, EL students, and there was some special education students as well. We have to look at busing in the future, maybe a little bit differently, and provide some more busing options.
But not just for the busing, but if we, if-
Oh, the size of the camp.
The size of the camp.
The 80.
Yeah, the 80 kids, could, could we increase it?
We, we increased it on our own this year. We actually put a line item in the budget, if you remember, going back a year, we had asked for a line item in the budget to be able to increase it. We could certainly do that again, to be able to increase the number of students that were getting it. The only, the only thing to recognize, too, is that this takes up some room of what we're doing for summer school, and we have to make sure that we can do all of our programming. So, we don't want to expand into a second elementary school because we need to clean the schools as well in the summer. So, that's part of our concern is we just want to make sure that we don't want it to grow so big that we actually are displacing some of our other federal entitlement programs. But it's a great question, it's a great problem to have.
Right, exactly.
We want to expand it, it is something that we'll have to look at.
Didn't know what the parameters, thank you.
And I apologize if you didn't mention it, but just so the public knows that this was free to students, so, you know-
Free, with breakfast and lunch provided.
With breakfast and lunch provided, exactly. So-
And that's what we asked for in the budget, is to be able to do, most districts do this at a fee cost to the parents of $275 for the week, somewhere around that range. We asked for money in the budget yes, last year, to cover that, but we also have been incredibly lucky to have a second year in a row to get a generous grant that covers a large portion of the cost for us as well from, from a company, so.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct. But, you know, when I ask students, because I teach fifth grade, I'd see kids like, how come you're not going to sign up? And it's like, my, you know, mom and dad work till 5:00 or 5:30, I can't get a, you know, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard when it's like, it's the time.
Yep.
But it is, it's available to all. And I went around and I went to each fifth grade classroom and I was like, hey! Anybody else outside?
No, sounds like a lot of fun. Thank you. Thanks so much. Are you coming up here, sir? Or should I just keep, keep going? Hey, I'll just keep, I'm on a roll.
So, we're attached before-
Well, before that, we actually do have a communication this evening that came in, and as the secretary, Mrs. Matthews is going to read it into the record, please.
So, okay. So, we received an email from Marlene Manell. Dear school committee members, I understand that you will be discussing/voting on renewing the contract for North Reading Transportation tonight. I am unable to attend the meeting in person, but felt that you should be aware of what I think is an unsafe situation. If possible, this email should be entered as public participation. Communication. I ride a North Reading Transportation bus for various music events, football games, MICA, MAGIC, and other music-related events, and I have, I felt, excuse me, I have felt uneasy to downright scared with the various drivers over the years. This year is no exception. The first two home football games, the van rides from MHS to Kelleher Field, both days of trips to the field and back. The driver drove fast, took corners too quickly, and in my opinion, were unsafe in the way they drive. My heart was in my throat numerous times in those very short rides. My concern, not only for my safety and those on the van buses, but how do these drivers drive daily when there are only children on the buses with no adult to see what they really do? I have felt this in the years past and assume that since this had a contract, since they had a contract, there was little that could be done. However, the contract is up for bid now, and I feel compelled to say something. Besides dangerous driving, many of the drivers seemed unprepared with not knowing where they are going or how to get there. Our late have dropped elementary students off having to cross a busy street when the bus should have come up the street so the children could get off at the correct side of the street without having to cross it. I understand that the requirement is to put out three bids and take the best price. I would hope that at some point, safety would take precedence over cost. Thank you, Marlene Manell, 239 Wilson Street.
Thank you.
Discussions, questions, comments?
Motion to put into record.
Motion to accept and place on file. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, opposed, carries. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin my report tonight by recognizing two outstanding and deserving students for the Superintendent's Certificate of Excellence. Below, you'll find the written recommendation from the Guidance Department on their behalf, which I will read into the record. Both students are from the class of 2020. Din Ton came to the United States with her family from Vietnam at the age of four. This experience has greatly shaped Din's life, as she stated, "With immigration comes not the loss of identity, but rather the expansion of who you are and the unity of multiple cultures into one being." Din has been president of the Marlboro High School International Club for the past three years, as well as vice president of the French Club. Additionally, Din volunteers her time as a mentor for the MHS Mentor Program, the Interact Club, and at the Marlboro Public Library. She has been the recipient of multiple faculty awards in world language and business. Due to her academic achievements, she was inducted into the National Honor Society two years ago. To date, she has taken 15 honors-level courses in three AP classes. She is currently enrolled in two early college high school classes offered through Quinzigman Community College and three AP classes. At the close of her junior year, Din was ranked number two in her graduating class with a 4.833 cumulative GPA. Din is extremely hardworking, responsible, and detail-oriented young woman. She plans to major in biology or biochemistry in anticipation of pursuing her ultimate goal of being a dentist. Congratulations to Din on all of your achievements. I'd like to present her, I'm sorry, please go ahead. I'd like to now present her with the certificate and give her an opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to thank you guys for this wonderful honor, and I would like to thank my parents for supporting, for supporting me in my studies and my extracurricular activities. And I would also like to thank the teachers at the Marlboro High School for supporting me and providing me guidance throughout my years. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
The next recipient is Sarah Hayward. Sarah is one of the most impressive, impressive students I have encountered in my career. She is passion, passionate, determined, confident, and kind. Sarah has a passion for learning and takes challenging courses to further her knowledge and take advantage of the educational opportunities provided to her. By the time she graduates, she will have completed nine advanced placement courses. Sarah is ranked first in her class with a cumulative 4.9 GPA. Sarah has held many leadership positions, including president of the National Honor Society, president of the Interact Club, secretary of the Mandarin Club, and treasurer of Habitat for Humanity. She serves on the Lerman National Student Advisory Council and is a member of the American Diabetes Association Youth Leader Program. She has been awarded the Bausch &amp; Lomb Honorary Science Award, the Harvard Book Award, faculty awards in numerous subject area, and is an AP scholar with honors. Giving back to the community and helping others is very important to Sarah. She takes an active role in many charity fundraisers, including Relay for Life and the American Diabetes Association. Sarah plans to major in physics at the collegiate level with eventual plans of doing scientific research in quantum mechanics or environmental science. She is organized, hardworking, and has excellent time management skills. Tonight, in addition to receiving the MASSS Certificate of Excellence, Sarah is being recognized as the commended student in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations to Sarah on all of her accomplishments.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Murphy to assist me in presenting this certificate.
And this is the certificate. Thank you.
I just want to say a couple words of thank you, thanks. Sorry, that did not make sense. Thank you to all of you for being here tonight, and thank you to my mother, who's right there, and my father, who happens to be away right now, but is here in spirit. And, as Din said, the amazing teachers and faculty of MHS who really helped me get to this position. Thank you, guys, and have a great night.
I need some water after reading all this. Good job. So, for my second item on the report, I have attached to this report my draft FY20 Superintendent Goals. It's for you to read and reflect upon and give me any sort of feedback. This year, I've included the standard for which the goals relate to, as I did receive some informal feedback last year about how the standards and goals feel separated at times. I used a new rubric to start, and that is a decision that we would make together. So, if you would like to use the new rubric, I'd be happy to be part of that experiment. I'm happy to go back and use the old rubric as well. At the next school committee meeting, I will put it on the agenda for a vote for the goals and the rubric. Should we decide to use it together, we do need to register with the state to offer our combined insight at the end of the process to whether or not it was a good thing or a bad thing for them to change the rubric. And that's my report. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? Ms. Matthews.
I'm actually, Ms. Hennessy forwarded some comments to me, and on goal number two, Mr. Superintendent, the concern, or, I'm not going to read what she said because we talked about it, but there's a, your goal is to be president in the schools, continue to support the important work of principal and director of evaluation by being present, active superintendent of all the schools. The concern was to ensure that the, your interaction with all of the principals maintained the common message throughout the system, so that, that part of communication, that if, as long as you're hearing the same, going back to the equity thing, that, that you're hearing the same message being conveyed that your expectations are or our expectations are. Thank you. Talk further.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Just so we're clear, be prepared to discuss it next time.
Right.
Thank you.
And based on that feedback, I will revise Goal Two and bring a revised Goal to the meeting. Thank you.
Be prepared. Be good boy scouts. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations. I'd like to start off with Food Services. Our negative balance is currently at just under $1,400 compared to a negative balance of just over $2,100 at the same period last year, so we're doing okay there for now. We do want to take this opportunity to remind all parents that the free and reduced lunch applications should be completed or are to be completed every year. Last year's eligibilities are still valid up until the first week of October, but at that point, everyone who has not yet applied will return to being fully paid. So, please, complete the application as soon as possible through your school. As always, if anyone is not comfortable doing that through their schools, they're welcome to reach out to me directly, and we can do that through my office.
May I just interrupt, just so people are clear, how does this affect, we voted to not have reduced?
Correct. So, we're not collecting the reduced fee when it comes to the national school lunch program. The reduced fee, what you know, used to be the 40 cents. So, what we're doing is, if you're reduced or free, you are free.
Just so everyone's clear. And you still have to fill out the application.
Correct. So, we still have to apply.
Yep. Is the application online?
Yes.
Is the, I'm sorry to interrupt, one more question, following question with that, is the past several reports we've had about this, we've been in a bigger negative number than the previous period? This one is, the first one is less. Is that because of the no fee?
I'm not celebrating this number yet, Earl. There could be a number of reasons why. We've had some efforts over the summer to communicate with families. We now have this initiative to not collect from families who are in reduced status. There could be a number of things, but I'm going to it a few months before I start celebrating on this just yet. But I'm hoping that this year will be a positive year for this. So, the beginning of the year has been very exciting for food services, the kitchen improvement at Marlboro High have been well-received by both staff and students. At Whitcomb, we've been consistently serving over 900 lunches and recently hit a high of 976, which is an all-time high. We don't have the official numbers just yet, but we all believe that lunch participation has been increasing this year, which is very positive. We're also seeing a positive impact from the addition of the chef manager, which was a new thing that earmarks trying this year. Students are being exposed to a wider palette of foods, such as a bruschetta pizza special last week at the elementary level, which was well-received. So, we'll be trying to do some more of these things at all levels throughout the year. An update on the Boys and Girls Club Licensed Summer and After School Program. Attached to my report this week is an update from Chris Dwayne, president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Metro West. The start of the year has been very successful, with very high demand from the community, so much so that earlier this year, we were full. Participation is much higher now than it was last year, although we do currently have some space available for any parents that are interested. Mike and I have spoken to Chris Dwayne, and if programs do get full at the elementary sites, Chris is open to exploring ways that we could expand our capacity. So, we'll be monitoring that in the next few weeks. Anyone seeking additional information can come to our website or call their direct line, which is 508-485-4912. Translation, just want to take a little, this opportunity to celebrate the successful FY19 that was, that our translation team had. The team was able to keep up with a very high internal demand for translations of documents as well as notices home from school. There were over 2,300 documents or notices translated internally, and zero Portuguese or Spanish documents- or Spanish documents were sent out to a third-party provider, which is a significant savings for us. This is something that the entire team strives to do and something that they're very proud of. In addition to translating documents, the team is available at schools and over the phone to assist staff, parents, and students. They're also available at IEP meetings and evening events, such as the ongoing curriculum nights. We want to congratulate Daisy Ray, their manager, and all of the translators for the important service that they provide to our community. We want to thank the city, as well as the school committee, for continuing to support the investment, which we think is critical. There are currently two opportunities for anybody who's looking to join the team. We're looking for a Spanish, as well as a Spanish translator, and if you are interested, you can go to our website, HR website, for additional information. Transportation. Our transportation vendor, NRT, are currently working hard to identify and correct any issues that have come up during the start of the school year. It's customary to make changes after a couple of weeks of school to correct routes that are too full or too long. We've also had some additional enrollment at the elementary level, which have also caused some additional issues for us this year. We appreciate the community's patience as we make some necessary adjustments to some of our bus routes. Delays and other issues have stemmed, at least in part, from the need to utilize substitute drivers. Like many other communities around us, the current labor market is making it hard for NRT to hire and maintain a full fleet of drivers. And this is, as I said, is the root of a lot of the issues that we're experiencing right now. If anyone is looking for an opportunity to drive in our community, please call NRT. You can visit our website. We have a link directly to them where you can apply. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the committee? Any questions? Ms. Matthews?
Um.
Is this your question or a relayed question?
Both.
Okay.
Combined. On the Boys and Girls Club, it's nice to see that the numbers are up, and do we know if, it looks like Richard is at capacity, have we turned, have they turned anybody away at this point?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that information.
I couldn't tell you that right now, but when we did, we did meet with Chris Dwayne, and we are willing to look at other options to expand programming if the need is there. I think the hard thing is a couple of weeks into school, there is movement in these numbers.
Right.
So I think while she might say it's full right now, if you give me two weeks, I might have three openings.
Right.
So if we see this as a long-term issue going into October, and we're still facing some of that, then we'll try to work with them on their licensing and see if we can't get them some additional space.
Yeah, because obviously I don't want to see anybody turned away who has the need. And if it's a licensing thing, hopefully we can resolve it quickly. And, that's it. Sorry. Thank you.
You good?
Yeah.
I have a question with regard to the transportation. So given the feedback we received earlier, and I'm sure we received feedback on an own basis about the buses, what's our avenue to pursue things like, I know there's subjective opinions, but what do we have, if we receive, you know, a concern that somebody is?
Can I ask you just to hold that until we get to the item down the bottom? We're going to be discussing that, right? We're going to be discussing the contract and other issues.
A vote on the contract later on.
So I want to, globally, if we could? That'd be great. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Ms. O'Brien.
All right. Actually have to wear these now.
It gets worse.
Good evening. As you all know, we have had a lot of progress on our new elementary school. It's going up pretty quick, and over the past year, administration has had discussions about some of the plans going into putting in, in building a fourth elementary school. So currently, each of our three elementary schools hosts a specific district-wide program. Any of our special education students that require one of the programs that's not located in their assigned school, assigned by residence, would be enrolled and transported to the school where that program is located. So for instance, our therapeutic learning center, which is K to four, is located at Kane Elementary, and that is one classroom, and it has one special education teacher and adult support staff per individual student's IEPs. I'm going to take these off, they bother me. Sorry. The Connections Program, which is for students with cognitive and complex medical needs, is located at Richard Elementary School, and that also consists of one classroom and one special education teacher and adult support staff, depending on individual student IP needs. And our Pathways Program, which is our ABA, Autism-Based Program, is located at Jarwick School, and this is the program that we have our most student enrollment in. And this consists of three classrooms, and we have four special education teachers that are staffing that, along with adult support staff, supporting the students there. So if there is a student that, whose homeschool would be Kane Elementary, who requires the Pathways Program at Jarwick, they're enrolled and they attend school at Jarwick, and we transport the students over to that building. So in prepping for a fourth elementary school, administration had discussions around where would the programs be located once we have four elementary schools? And keeping in mind that we wanted equity among our four elementary schools, we didn't want all of, or the majority of the programs to be located, say, at the new elementary school, where, like, climate control, central air and things like that are locations near, closer to the nurse for the classroom. Those types of things were in the original plans that we had for that first design when I first came in. But the design, the building plans changed, so it's not the same as what the original intent was. And for equity, we're, part of our discussion was, we really didn't want to have all of our in-district programs located in one or maybe two of our elementary schools. So in looking at that, the decision was made that the TLC program, the therapeutic learning center, would remain at Kane School. The Connections Program would remain at Richard School, and the Pathways Program would be broken up so that we would have two classrooms at, remain at Jarwick, and then two at the new elementary school, with the potential that the great configurations of the two classrooms would be a K12 and a 345, so that we can break up the age spans of the students. So in part of that, once we have the reorganization, the redistricting of where students would be, students whose homeschool would be Jarwick, that are Pathways, would be at Jarwick. Students whose homeschool would be the new elementary school would be there for Pathways. And just depending on numbers for the other two, two buildings, for Kane and Richard, ideally, we would try to pair up one of those two schools to be like a sister school with Jarwick and the new elementary school. As far as like, if, you know, just matching up, instead of having Kane, okay, are you going to go to Jarwick, or are you going to go to the new elementary school? So the staffing, the teachers, that will be decided along with all of the other staff. We will be doing surveys, preference sheets for staff. But now that, this knowledge of where the program locations are, now that that knowledge is public, being presented to the school committee, my plan will be to go and have conversations with those teachers and let them know where the program locations are, and they will have that information as they fill out their preference sheets on where they would like to be located. Any questions?
I just want to add one thing real quick. Part of the reason we're also looking to split the Pathways Programs, two classrooms and two classrooms, is we do see a demand at the preschool level
Yes.
For additional services in the future, and my fear would be if we have the Pathways Program located only in one school, that we would be back where we are right now by 2022 or 2023. I would be out of space in an elementary school very quickly, if the need would keep on continuing the way it is right now.
Yeah, thank you. So there are no students who'll be moving out of any of the elementary Pathways Programs for next year, because fourth grade will be, fifth grade, they'll be staying at the elementary level, and we do have a number of preschoolers who are in the Pathways Program who will be feeding into the K to five program as kindergartners next year.
Ms. Ryan.
Just so I understand it correctly, have you determined that K first and second is at one particular school and third and fifth is at another?
Uh, no. Both will, both will have a K.
Two classes in each school.
So Jarwick will have one classroom that would be a K12.
Right.
And they, their second classroom would be a 345. And then the new, and then the new elementary school would, so there'd be notes.
So like at third grade, they're not moving to a new school?
Yes, correct. Yep. The purpose of that would be so there wouldn't be any transitions. We wouldn't have two classrooms of K1 and 2 in one building and then having to transfer over.
I have another question. And I think you kind of touched on this, but when we were initially designing the new school, we kept using the term medically fragile, because they would be attending the new school. Is that still the case?
Uh, no. Connections, Connections would be still located at Richard School. There are some Pathway students that do have some medical needs. However, there, currently, we don't have any students with, no, I take that back. We do have, we do have one kindergartner that does, we have the medical staff in place to be able to support students in the Connections Program at Richard.
Okay. I just, I don't remember being referred to as the Connections Program. It was always referred to as medically fragile. So now that you've said that, now I understand that they'll stay where they are. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Attending motion to approve the minutes from August 27.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries. Prove the minutes for September 10.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation? Seeing none. MHS schedule adjustment requests.
I'd like to ask Dan Riley to come up and just give you some background on the request that we do yearly for early release formats.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. So you have the memo in front of you. This is a request that's consistent from what we've had in the past with one additional change this year. So as you know, we have midterm and final exams at the high school. One of the issues that our instructors have with the midterm format is they issue these exams at the end of Semester One, and then there is no time to discuss the results that come from those exams, so that they can make adjustments to their practice going into Semester Two. So this proposal asks us to capitalize on some of the allowance that we have above the 990 hours of instruction that's required of us to provide the staff with time to review those results and then make adjustments to practice as a result of that.
Motion to approve the staggered or early release presented by Mr. Riley.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
MASC conference delegate. Ms. Matthews?
No, no. No, no. Make a motion to nominate Mrs. Matthews as the delegate.
What? How'd you get out of this?
Well, she's been doing it the last couple of years.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she was going to nominate you.
But she can't nominate herself. No, I'm nominating her, and then she can nominate me to be the alternate.
Motion made and seconded to nominate Ms. Matthews to be our delegate. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries. Thank you very much. Glad that's done.
Motion to have Ms. Bodenhendiger as the alternative delegate.
Motion made and seconded to allow Mrs. Bodenhendiger to be the alternative delegate. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries.
Yeah, just in case I don't make it there.
Alternative.
Yeah, alternate, I know, alternative. I did change it. Are you going to read or am I going to read?
I usually do, but you can if you want. There's, yeah, there's so many of them. Oh, and there was a discrepancy between the, no, the agenda item says that there were six, and then there's really eight.
They go on forever.
There's nine.
Nine, sorry, nine. You know, when it was six, I was like, yeah, it's going to be short. And then I was like, no, it's nine.
I thought we did a summary last year.
Well, I don't read the whole thing, because it's, yeah.
You mean the whereas, or there.
Yeah, the, yeah, the first, yeah. So I just want, I know that you were looking for some more information. Are you prepared to vote tonight?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So I, Ms., it does state at the end of each of these resolutions that there is additional information on the MASC website, and I couldn't find it either. So I did reach out to some folks at MASC to try to get some idea of where it might be on the website, hidden, but it was kind of late in the day, and I wasn't able to reach anyone. So if I do get further information, I'm happy to share it. So for those watching the meeting, lots of luck to you. Every year, at the MASC Conference, we vote on resolutions that a committee puts together that kind of help to shape the advocacy work that MASC does for the year. And they are steeped in legalese, so to speak. So do you want to, do you want to start? You want to do a few?
I'll do a few.
If you get tongue-tied, I'll jump in.
Resolution one, banning polyestereen from.
I think it's polystyrene.
Styrene, sorry. Yes, I really, I like read it and said it, polystyrene from schools, submitted by Silverlake Regional School District. Should I, we don't need to do all the whereas, just the, therefore it be resolved that MASC urge the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to ban the use of expanded
Polystyrene.
Polystyrene foam cups, bowls, plates, and trays from Massachusetts public schools by the 2022-2023 school year.
So I actually have a question. Do, do we use polystyrene in our schools currently?
Yes.
Okay.
What is, is that our option?
We would have to most likely go to hard trays, hard plates.
No, I've been to other school, this is kind of like a cardboard-y sort of thing.
There is a paper.
Yeah, it's paper.
Postable option.
That's what it is.
There is, of course, a
Additional charge.
Four, four, five times more expensive than
Yeah.
The foam trays.
But it still is our option, what we buy.
Currently, yes.
So why do we want the state to ban it? Why don't they just ban their own down in Silverlake Regional?
Well, because it causes cancer, and they're trying to look out for everyone's kids and not just their own kids.
God forbid people end up in my.
So my guess is if it ever did come to this, since the whole state would be doing it, they'd have to figure out, food service companies would have to figure out, because they supply it, right? Do they?
Pay for it.
It's a cost to us. So yes, it is purchased through Aramark, but it is a cost to our program.
Yeah. I mean, I think if the whole state was doing it, wouldn't the whole state have to come up with a plan, and there would be?
So that, my feeling on this personally is that this is, becomes a, whether the Commonwealth makes a decision or local municipalities make the decision, MASC's little input and the additional costs, I don't think it's, we're here for education, not for
Thank you.
So you don't care if all of our kids get cancer? Just kidding, just kidding.
My God. Hold in the bowl, or fishbowl.
No, I care about our children. I do not care to make the decision if our, if No, I care about our children. I do not care to make the decision if, if, if the mayor and the city councilors decide that we're gonna ban, ban plastic bags and whatever, that's a community thing. I don't think, personally, I don't feel that this has any reflection of what we do. Yes, a motion to not.
Motion made and seconded to reject resolution number one. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing on the motion to reject the resolution, all those in favor of rejecting? All those opposed? Carries.
Resolution two, pertaining to educator diversity and professional licensure submitted by the Arlington School Committee. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massa, that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee calls for the elimination of the EMTIL and the Mass Performance Assessment for Leaders, MA PAL, as licensing requirements for educators. And be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the governance and licensure of professional educators to be vested in a board comprised of licensed educators.
Comprised, not compromised.
Comprised, I'm sorry, comprised.
I'm actually curious what you educators think about this.
I would love for them to do away with this system. I think that, this is my opinion. I have not seen any research that supports the correlation or causality of a certification or a licensure with the quality of a teaching candidate. I think it is, sometimes can be hard for us to recruit out of state candidates because there is very few states that we have compacts with that allow, whether it be the praxis or another state exam in a different area, for that teacher to become licensed quickly in Massachusetts. I would just say from my experience that licensure can be a hurdle for some folks, and this would remove the hurdle.
But this isn't a dumbing down thing. This is a.
They would already have a degree and there's already, you know, you already, for, for hiring our professional faculty, almost all of our faculty have master's degrees, which to me is a, a very high bar for someone in a institution to receive a master's degree. So for me, I believe that that is enough for us to look at the technical aspects that they can do that work. Whereas the EMTIL is really looking at their ability to read, write, and comprehend. The master's degree is generally a good indicator that they can do all three of those. So to take an additional test at the cost of 125, it might be 135 now, I haven't taken it in a long time, I would say that it's a hurdle for some folks. And what this resolution talks to is that there are also institutional hurdles for people to become teachers, that this just shouldn't be in the way. And I agree.
Patel?
Yes.
Any, any, from your standpoint?
I do agree. Some of these EMTILs, they are testing your knowledge, not your ability to teach or be an effective educator. There is a high cost and it, it kind of binds people into, moving into other areas. So without a specific EMTIL, I cannot teach something I may be really, really good at teaching. So, you know, again, our undergrad and master's degrees are dealing with the content and the experts that we're in. And, you know, we're educators. So I think you need to concentrate on more educational degrees rather than, you know, an EMTIL that tells me I know chemistry.
So, and I, I would add that I think it also is a barrier to people who are coming from other fields into education. Maybe, you know, they might be, you know, an engineer for many years, go back, get a master's in education. And having that extra level of, oh, and then nurses, the nurses have to take EMTILs, right?
Yeah, and I can speak to the PAL, which is the.
Oh, yeah.
Requirement for Preschool Assistant Principal. Each section of that costs 100 or 100 dollars to subject. It takes them three months to score it. They only score it two or three times a year. It is, they, they went from a very loosey goosey kind of system to a very restrictive system. It is very difficult for people to begin to find the power for the requirements for that.
I agree with everything Ms. Patel said. And additionally, the Commonwealth has already experimented with this. Commonwealth charter schools are not under the same regulations as public schools. They've not had to keep with the same licensure requirements. I would love to see an evening of the playing field, that we also have the same opportunity.
Very good point.
entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Resolution three.
School transportation submitted by the Hudson School Committee and revised by the Resolutions Committee. Be it further resolved, or excuse me, therefore be it resolved that in order to promote greater competition for bus service contracts and improve performance, MASC calls for the creation of a working group to advise the legislature on the best solutions to support greater competition and higher performance from transportation companies. Be it further resolved that in order to promote greater competition for bus service contracts, the legislature should eliminate Mass General Law Section, Chapter 71, Section 7C, and authorize a deeper analysis into the lack of bidders on school transportation contracts. So I just have to say, I was actually very surprised that Hudson was the one who put this in, since they were just awarded, or just awarded a new bus contract. And we just went through a process and we had multiple bidders. So we know they're out there.
Yeah, they probably submitted this a year ago, like a while ago, before they even got the contract.
The experience that I had, when I was in my former position, Patty Lang and I worked together, she's the business director from Hudson, and we, we put out a pretty comprehensive bid that, off the top of my head, was about $15 million bid, and we got one bidder. So I can understand what this.
No, I mean, I, I know we've talked about it in the past, that there's, because it gets very regionalized and it gets territorialized also. But I don't know what motion to go in, again, either direction.
What, what is your sense?
It's a private entity.
I'm personally in favor of anything that brings in more competition and better service in this field. So.
So that particular law, do you think that is a barrier? Do you, are you familiar with?
So 30, uh, 71.
71, 7C.
I mean, we, we wouldn't necessarily utilize a regional transportation here to transport our students. I'm personally, so for transportation, we have to go with an IFB and not an RFP process. An RFP might be something that gives us more leverage. So, and they touch upon that here, whereas 30B, Section 5 requires acceptance of the lowest cost bid. So they're bringing that up, and I appreciate that.
So what is 71, 7C?
That's the regional transportation authorities that are basically excluded from bidding processes.
What, what is eliminating that? How does that help me?
I might allow, maybe a larger community would be able to work with a regional transportation authority to transport students. I, I think it already happens in some ways across the state. I, I know it's actually very common in New York City.
Commercially?
Yes.
So we should, we shouldn't even be taking a position on this?
I, this doesn't affect Marlboro. If we had a regional transportation system that was robust and went around the city continually, then that might be an option where we could give kids passes.
So, so the, a pass system, when you were saying New York City, so utilizing, utilizing public transportation for the, for the.
Not only that, but this is saying that those entities cannot bid. What, this is a barrier.
Oh, got it. So that's the barrier.
They cannot bid.
That's the barrier.
That's, that's how I understand it.
So Worcester, so Worcester is an example, right?
Yeah, probably any of the cities, any of the bigger cities that have like city buses that are, that's interesting. Because having grown up in New York and utilizing bus and subway passes, I can see why that would be frustrating, not be able to utilize a system that's not there, but it has no impact on us, so.
It's not, it's not impactful to us.
But would it, if they eliminated both of these barriers and studied it, maybe they could come up with something that would, this time around, we got ample bidders.
We had three bidders, which was fantastic.
But that, that didn't happen last time.
No, no, we had one bidder last time.
Right. So we don't know if this was a fluke or not.
I think it, Doug, you probably have more information on this. I think the provision here for us, that we would want to be considered about, is what they're talking about, Mass 30B, Section 5, which directs us to accept the lowest bid in IFB process. So we can't use an RFP process to do transportation.
But it's not asking to, it doesn't say that it's eliminate, it wants to eliminate that. It says it wants to eliminate.
71, 7C.
71, 7C. It doesn't say anything about eliminating 38, 30B, 308, whatever it is.
Doesn't have a lot to do with us. Yeah. They wanted to eliminate that provision and allow us to use RFPs statewide, that would be something interesting for us to look at.
So that's good information, because what happens at this, um, uh, conference, at the conference, is a lot of people come and they try to make new, you know, new, change it.
Amend.
Amend it. And sometime, like, it's conceivable that somebody could amend it to include that. And if that were to be the case, then we would be more in favor of it. So.
Okay, how about this? Motion to approve resolution with an amendment to include 30B.
Are you gonna eliminate 30B from the municipal process?
Well, just, just take the busing out of it.
Yeah, but that's a money thing.
We'd still follow 30B.
I mean, you're taking the lowest bidder, period. Yeah, it should be eliminated and get the best bidder, but we can't do that.
Well, but if we weren't bound by 30B, we could.
So the, RFPs are still under 30B. So Section 5 is saying that we don't have a choice in what we use as a bid, IFB or RFP. So that, that might be a discussion for the floor, is to say that school districts should be able to use an RFP to.
Instead of an IFB.
But that still would be under 30B, under the law.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
You just can't currently do it right now.
Will you pass on this?
Well, she just made a motion to approve.
Okay. The motion made, I'll do a courtesy second to approve. Are you making the amendment or not?
Yes, amending, amending.
Include 30B.
To include 30B with a.
To allow.
To allow RFPs.
To allow districts to use an RFP process to procure transportation services.
Thank you.
On the motion as amended, any discussion?
Can I just have a clarifying question? What's an IFB versus the RFP?
Invitation for bid versus request for proposals. IFBs are a little bit more restrictive in the language, and you basically go with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, which generally means the lowest bidder. RFP generally means you have a set of criteria that you rate their bid on. This is similar to the process we use with Aramark. Do you remember that? Okay. So that's a RFP, where we rate them before we look at price.
Any other questions? On the motion to approve, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I'm abstaining from this.
Okay.
Number four.
Where are we? There we are. Climate change, proposed by the Resolutions Committee. Um, where does it go? Wait a second. Sorry, changes pages. Here we go. Therefore, be it resolved.
Like you said in the first one, why are we even talking about?
I have to read this out loud, then we can have that.
Read it.
MASC calls on Congress to take swift and effective action on climate change to protect current and future students.
This Resolution Committee really has nothing to do, do they?
So we're gonna come up with a resolution for next year. I already know what it's gonna be, so.
Can I, I'll put it out in front of you tonight?
Not to have resolutions? No. Um, so, uh, motion to reject.
Motion made and seconded to reject. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries.
Michelle? I'm not trying to hurt our children.
I know. There's not a lot we can do to affect the climate change in this.
Turn off the lights.
I, I, I agree.
There's nothing there.
Yeah.
So what, so I'm sorry. It was to reject, to reject.
Okay. So I guess I voted for that.
Okay. Resolution number five. Full funding of transportation costs for students in foster care and state care, submitted by the MASC Board.
Move to approve.
Direct. Therefore be resolved that the Commonwealth should fully reimburse transportation funding for children in foster care and state care. DCF and DESI must complete the process to provide proper documentation for the Commonwealth to receive reimbursement for transportation expenses under Title 4E of the Social Security Act. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries.
One second. Six, universally, universal quality pre-kindergarten access in Massachusetts. Note, this resolution is a reaffirmation of a 2014 resolution submitted by the Framingham School Committee. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC file or support legislation that will provide a sufficient appropriation for universal pre-K in Massachusetts and will achieve the actions necessary to provide access to good, quality, universal pre-K for all children in Massachusetts. Motion to approve. And I believe we approved it back in 2014, because that was the year we started full.
Day kindergarten.
Full day kindergarten.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Number seven.
Poverty and children. Note, this resolution is a reaffirmation of a 2015 resolution submitted by the Framingham School Committee. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee will prioritize as a matter of its public policy agenda and file for and support legislation to support the eradication of poverty among children in Massachusetts, and advocate for social and economic justice for students and their families that will include support for a revenue stream that supports social and economic priorities for children and families, support for state programs and services that serve children at greatest social and emotional risk, which are easily accessible to students and families, advocacy for nutrition programs that eradicate hunger among children, advocacy for healthcare, including vision, hearing, dental, and mental health through accessible service providers, support for pre-K programs for all children, and advocacy for increasing educational opportunities for children to grow both inside and outside of school.
So is this priority gonna be before the transportation or after, and before the pre-kindergarten, and after that? Which is the priority?
First, move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve.
Okay. So this is basically just, you know, I, I think the reason that they're doing this, I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing, is that we, MASC get, gets requests regularly to sign on as supporting legislation and other movements, like, RuPaul, what do you call the thing on your tag there?
Um, the Promise Act?
The Promise Act. So things like that. So other organizations come up with things that they're pushing and they ask us to support it. MASC Board doesn't feel comfortable supporting things without getting sort of permission. And since these are the types of things that they get asked for, I think that they just want to know from the members that they are supportive of these types of advocacy activities.
But this came out of Framingham originally.
Originally, but that's, it doesn't matter who writes it. I mean, the purpose of all of these resolutions is to direct the advocacy activities of the whole association, regardless of who writes the resolution. I don't think there's any expectation that MASC is gonna cure nutrition for all children in Massachusetts. That's not the purpose.
I think it said the world.
Oh, perhaps they did.
Oh, perhaps they did. Yeah. So there's a motion to approve on the floor.
Does everyone have so much fun doing these? You know, do all the committees enjoy it?
It's actually... You're going to have to sit in on it this year, I think, just to watch.
There is no chance. There is absolutely no chance.
I suggested you for that committee.
Yeah, that's great.
There's a motion on the table.
Don't have me hypnotized before I leave. Motion made, seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Number eight. Resolution for access to menstrual supplies. That's appropriate. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC work with the state and federal legislatures to provide additional funding to provide free access to menstrual products from the school nurse and in restrooms and locker rooms.
Do we provide this in our school system?
If they go to the nurse, they get it, yes.
The nurse's office.
Not all districts do, apparently.
Isn't that their business? Why am I telling them what to do? Can't we take care of our own and worry... Let Southboro take care of their people?
Well, Southboro probably does, but maybe Worcester doesn't. And this is telling the state that the state needs to make sure that kids in Worcester should be able to get a tampon if they need it. I mean, maybe other... Or Brockton, who has like not any money to even educate their kids, let alone pony up for...
Well, from what I heard today, they're going to be getting more money through the new funding bill.
Well, we'll see whether it... It's halfway there. It's not 100% there yet. But regardless, it's an equity issue across the state. We happen to deal with us. Well, not everything always is about us. This is about education across the state.
No, this is not about education. This is about supplying...
Yeah.
Supplying something that is at a cost.
So apparently, I mean, I read through the whole thing, and we can get more information. Perhaps there's backup. But it intimated in some of it that there are students who are not attending school.
Correct, I did see that.
So it could in fact be contributing to a... An issue of absenteeism.
Well, it does say, it says roughly half the US student population, but I would love to know what the statistic is from Massachusetts.
Arkansas doesn't do it in any of their schools throughout the state.
And no one goes to school there.
But see...
This is how we're educating our kids. RuPaul just wants a little more money in the classroom. That's all.
I mean, does this open the door for other things that we need to provide?
Like what?
Go ahead. Go ahead. We already... Oh, go ahead. Are we passing on this, or are we going to take a vote on this?
Well, you can vote to do whatever you want to do. You can't really pass. She's responsible for having to vote on everything.
Stand up and just say, "This is silly. We're talking about it." That's all. You want me to go into this meeting? Are you crazy?
Oh, no, there's crazier ones than you there.
Oh, no.
Anybody want to put a motion out there?
Motion to approve.
Good. Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Please, no. All those in favor? Opposed, carries.
You're going to love the next one.
His favorite topic.
I didn't see vocational school in any of the languages.
I know. I have... I'm bringing it up.
That's our resolution for next year.
I have been... I have been bringing it up.
Resolution number nine. Charter school reform submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore, be it resolved that the MASC seek legislative action to both address the...
Deletarius.
Deletarius. English, please. Definition, please, before I spell that. Effects of charter school funding on certain municipalities and school districts across the state and approve a comprehensive set of reforms that include: One, establishment of strict guidelines or regulations to require that charter schools enroll representative cross-sections of students residing within the school service areas; Two, reporting of accurate numbers of students who leave charter schools to return to the sending districts or district of residence; Three, requiring the Mass Department of Education, Elementary and Second Education retain and report accurate data on enrollment of students with learning disabilities, physical disabilities, economic disadvantage, emotional disability, and status as racial and linguistic minorities; Four, state requirements that all charter schools be funded in full by the Commonwealth rather than by expropriation of Chapter 70 education aid from the sending cities, towns, and regions; and number five, state funding in full of any mitigation funds created to offset the loss of state funding for students who become students in charter schools. Motion to approve.
Any opinion from you all?
Number four and number five are in conflict of each other.
I was just going to say that, because...
And they already do number three.
Clarification of that.
Number three is already done. That's the...
The data?
Every district reports their data to the state.
Doesn't mean it's accurate.
That's a separate issue, but it's...
It says... Well, accurate's in there, though, so... Same with number two, though. That's the key thing there is...
Four and five are in conflict. That's my comment.
They're in conflict with each other?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Because if you state a requirement that they be funded in full by the Commonwealth, then you don't need mitigation funds.
Agreed. That's true.
They should get their own Chapter 70.
They should have their own line item. Right, there should be their own line.
But if they don't get them before, then number five will be like second place prize.
And that's number four.
Yeah, but they're not going to deal with it. They haven't dealt with it. It's a great political football, so they're going to keep it going.
Move to approve.
Do we amend it?
Of course.
All right, I want to change the word charter school to vocational school. We can use the same... Everything else is the same.
They're not funded the same way that charter schools are.
If I walked up there with that form...
I could just see Glenn.
Glenn would be like, "What?"
Just tell them where it came from. Hell on the street. Just pull things to all people.
It's, you know, it's just the ongoing hope that someday Massachusetts will actually do the right thing.
It's not Massachusetts, it's the legislature.
Well, the legislature, then, that they will fund it the way it should be funded.
I do think it should be noted when they're discussing it that four and five do conflict, or if four, then you don't need five, but if no... If four doesn't get there, then...
Right.
But other than that, I don't wish you... It's not going to happen, but...
And number three is already done. But not accurate.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you. Thanks for reading, Heidi.
We have one more vote down.
Oh, we have, yes. The bylaws. You can read that one.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, it's just amending the bylaws to include the minority caucus, and the past president can serve as a non-voting chair of the committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Thank you. Transportation contract.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
In front of the committee tonight, I have a recommendation to award a five-year transportation contract. The Marlborough Public Schools released an IFB, or invitation for bids, for a five-year contract to provide regular education transportation, in-district special education transportation, and kin event to transportation. The bid specifications were designed in a way that sought to address driver shortages, availability of information to parents, and district liability. Status is that we had a competitive IFB with responses from three interested vendors, which is unusual. North Riden Transportation, NRT, was the lowest bidder in all three categories, representing a significant overall savings over the second-lowest bidder of roughly $730,000 in the first year. Therefore, my recommendation is that the school committee vote to award a five-year contract to NRT.
Anything, motion to start discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Discussion?
So, well, now I have two questions, but the first, we'll go back to the other one. In the contract, the current one, or also this bid one, do we have an avenue to pursue feedback that we get? If it, whether it be a driver-related issue, or maybe it's a root-related issue, whatever it is, how do we... What's the process?
So if we receive a complaint or just a concerned parent that comes to us about speeding buses or kindergarten that was dropped off in the wrong place, we immediately contact NRT. We request to look at the tape, and if there is found, or the GPS data, which shows us the location of the bus, the speed at any given point. And if there are any issues, we address that with them. So if there is a concern about speeding or violation of a policy, the driver might be reprimanded. In some cases, if there is multiple issues, we might request that that driver no longer drives for the district. So we do have some recourse, and we work with them constantly on...
But they have... But they'll have... If somebody, again, it's subjective, if they're going too fast, or whatever. They have... They know the speed, they can...
We have the GPS data and the speed limit for that particular...
I can also say that I've talked to Chief Georgie last year and again this year. I want a school bus stopped, you know?
I was just saying, yeah.
Just, I think word through the bus company will go pretty quick if we just stop one bus. Try to wait till the end of the day so the kids are off of it, or after they drop them off in the morning, but I'd like to get a couple buses stopped. It's not too hard to find the ones that are flying around. Some of them are very, very responsive, respective of the traffic out there and do a great job. It's very difficult to find drivers right now. I mean, there was just an article, Framingham having a huge issue over there. The absenteeism is a big problem with all of them. It's not the greatest job in the world. Some really enjoy it. Some of the bus drivers, I mean, really, I could tell you the one that goes by my house. He's been out for a while, but he knows all the kids on a first-name basis, and he really treats the kids great. But it's difficult to find drivers. There's a 2% unemployment rate out there, so it's a difficult time. I received two letters in opposition to this contract, but I think we can find that it's going to be difficult to find anyone doing a much better job right now. It's just a difficult time for finding people that want to do it.
As a... Just kind of follow up that one. That's if we receive some communication or whatever, we notice, we can bring it to their attention. But do they have a, whether it be random or some sort of system where they would say monitor the speed? Instead of waiting for somebody to say, "Hey, they're going too fast," and then they go back and check out that driver? Do they have, you know, a periodic review of the driver's performance?
They have a safety person that works for NRT that does random checks. Sometimes those individuals might ride with the driver, so that's, again, random. But we have a pretty reliable community that if there are issues, we get reports that we can follow up on.
And the second question I had was, this contract, you said it saves... They're lower than the next bidder, $730,000 in the first year. What about the other years?
Oh, the other years are based upon a CPI average. Is that right, Doug?
Right. So the reason why I gave you the first year only is because we don't know yet what the second year looks like. We are protected, though, in this contract that it will not increase by more than 2.5%. It's tied to the Boston-based CPI, so if it's 1.5%, that's what it will go up by, 1.5%. If it's 3.4%, like last year, it will only go up by 2.5%.
And that would have been common with all the bids, anyway.
Right. So their first-year bid is the setting the base. And then each year thereafter. They're also protected on the downside. You can't go below...
1%.
1%. So there's a minimum that goes up, but there's also a maximum to protect our budget over the next five years.
And just to address the, you know, sometimes you have to not just go with the lowest bidder. We're kind of handcuffed. I mean, we don't have a lot of options unless there's a substantial reason not to go with the lowest bidder, and that's, you know, high-bought a hit. So it's not like we could just throw it out the door and pay the other $750,000, who will be challenged, and we would have some issues, so... Ms. Ryan?
I just had a question. Do the buses now have a GPS on them where they can track, like, speed?
Yes.
They do currently now?
To track location and speed. We don't currently have a way for us to look at where the buses are or for the parents to do that. That's something that we're trying to get to in the future, but yes, they're all equipped with the GPS.
I just wasn't sure if the new contract was going to include that, if that would deter, like, you know, encourage drivers to start driving appropriately. But if they already have it, is that included on the vans as well?
Should be in all their vehicles.
So they still have it, and they're still driving a little crazy. Okay. My other question is, like, how can they do it so much cheaper than the other bus companies? Like, that's a huge number to be off by. Like, they can do that? Like, any insight as to why it's like $700,000 less?
Looked at their financials. They have a solid business.
First Student's been around forever, though. Like, I would think they'd have a...
The only thing that I can also recommend as an insight is that this company that we're awarding to lost the contract for Hudson last year. So they knew coming into this contract that First Student had been very aggressive in their pricing model with Hudson and needed to come in aggressive from Marlborough to maintain our business over that five-year period. So First Student didn't come in as aggressive, as you can see, in the pricing model, but they came in aggressively. I mean, based on our cost right now, it's about a 3% to 4% increase, Doug?
The NRT?
For the contract to go to next year?
It would be less than that.
Less than that. So it's about a CPI increase over what we're paying right now. But like Doug had said at the beginning, we had put some stipulations into this contract to try to alleviate some of the problems we're having. So do you want to talk about some of the things we're trying to do to get, you know, a base for salary and other pieces?
So to alleviate the employment issue, we put a floor to salary, so they would not be allowed under this contract to pay less than $25 an hour to their drivers, which we believe will entice drivers to come drive for us. We also requested that we start working towards having an application for parents. We have a lot of complaints right now where parents don't know when the buses come into their stop. There is technology out there, NRT uses it in a couple of communities, where the parents are able to look at their device in the morning and see where the bus is in relation to their stop. So we would like to start exploring that. We might start that with our principals, because they want to know that information as well, and then eventually roll that out to the community. We also address some liability concerns as well. Given what has happened nationally in the past few years with buses, we upped our insurance requirements so that the city is protected a little bit more.
Above and beyond what was required.
Yes.
So those things that you just mentioned were in the contract?
Yes.
And we still got favorable pricing.
For next... So again, that's FY '21, so that's next year's contract.
This is rewarding it as of July.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Yes, everybody realizes we are way ahead of the curve on this, so...
Well, and...
Which is great.
For the last year or so, all you've been telling us is that the bus contract was going to murder us. And now this looks like it's not the case.
That's why we're reducing the budget next year.
See, we weren't supposed to open that box up, Michelle.
We are still going to have to add buses-
Yes.
For our realignment in the district.
Yes, right, of course.
So while that cost still exists-
Yeah.
It's not nearly the-
As grammar.
Issue that Doug and I both were very worried about. If you, I mean, if you look at the pricing from the other companies, either Durham or First Student, I, I think you would see that would be an entire percent of our budget. It'd be 1%, increase on our budget regardless of anything else, and we haven't added any buses yet. So, yeah, you're, you're right, I did, I have talked a lot about this the past couple of years, I've been very worried about it.
Didn't happen.
Have to take advantage of what's in front of us.
Yeah, you know, my whole thing on this is, you know, there's a lot of problems with this company. And we've, we've had complaints for the last five years about this company, but I don't have any sense that any other company is going to be able to do it any better.
That's the problem.
I mean, the, the, it's not really First's, it's not NRT's fault that there aren't an adequate number of drivers out there. First Student isn't going to just like grow them themselves, I mean-
They should do the same drivers.
Right, yeah, I mean, I just, you know, it kind of, I feel a little uneasy awarding the contract to this company knowing all the problems that have existed in the last number of years, but I, I honestly don't see any alternative. Yeah, I, I just-
But my overall comment on this is that whenever I get together with my colleagues or school business administrators, transportation is a hot topic. So every other vendor out there is struggling as well.
Yeah, so, and then I do know statewide, there are some communities that are looking at doing their own internal transportation, which is, you know, a whole nother-
The capital costs on that alone are significant, and I would, I would hesitate to do something that's out of our expertise.
Agreed.
That's, that's where I'd go with that.
When you get comp, when you get that other feedback from other, your, your peers and everybody's talking about transportation, do they have the same complaints? Is it all the same?
Very similar complaints, sometimes worse.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Acceptance of donations and gifts. Donor's Choice, Whitcomb School, fifth grade educa-, engineering class, $417.46.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Reports of subcommittees? Any reports of subcommittees? Seeing none, members forum? Any members? I, I just wanted to, I, I did go to a meeting today about that, that school funding bill that's down at the legislature that they've waited till the last minute to deal with, they want to vote on it within 10 days with no information to the public or to the communities or municipalities. They can't tell us what it's going to cost, they can't tell us where the money's going to come from. They're looking for support from the MMA and we took a pass on it, but there's just a lot of questions. They told us to go talk to our senators to find out what impact we would have with the new bill. We have, we reached out to Senator Aldridge and haven't heard back from him yet, but I asked the question, from what they said, it's really going to help out the people, the communities that are at minimum spending in their community. I said, well, we're substantially over minimum spending, but we have a huge frame-reduced lunch population of about 63% and a huge ELL population and, no, you probably get a little bit more. It's like a little bit more, you're talking $1.4 billion over the seven years, and we're going to get a little bit more, so. They, they seem to be addressing certain things they haven't been funding in the past, but they're going to guarantee it this time. They're going to assure us that we're going to get our money. The accountability piece, the only accountability piece is after you come up with your three-year plan, if you don't attain any positive results in your community, you got to come up with a new three-year plan. So it, it really has a ton of teeth in there and-
After three years, don't you have to come up with?
Everyone just looked at each other and said, I, I can't believe they're looking to jam this thing through without anyone seeing it, when they had so much time to take a look at things and haven't come through it too much, so that's my two cents.
Thank you for your two cents, since you were able to report that to us.
Anything else? Seeing none?
May I have a question about our student rep? When will she start to join us?
Does Dottie know she's supposed to be funny? I'll ask.
Okay. Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Thank you very much.